This meeting is also being streamed live on YouTube. Good morning, everyone. Thank you for taking the time to come out to the One Word Planning Commission meeting. A little housekeeping, please turn off or silence your cell phones. Public restrooms are located outside, in the middle of the building to the right. If there's anyone here in person who would like to testify, please fill out the yellow signup form at the staff table. Also, if you have any written testimony that has not been sent in earlier, you may submit that to staff now. Okay, I'd like to start by introducing the One Word Planning Commissioners. Vice Chair Chantel Parent is absent and excused. Commissioner Lauren Baylog is absent and excused. We have Commissioner Wayne DeLuise. We have Commissioner Janel Fukushima. And the commission welcomes a new member today, Commissioner Thomas E. Frattonardo. He is representing the at-large North Hilo-Hamakua seat. And I am Chair Louis Daniele III. We have quorum to hold this meeting today. Also present Deputy Corporation Counsel Diana Mellon-Lacy is present to advise the commission on legal matters. And Planning Director Jeffrey Darrell is present to advise the commission on planning matters should they have any questions. We have a little note here. Commissioner Wayne DeLuise. His term ends on December 31st, 2025. Yeah, I guess so. Yeah, I guess so. Today will be his last meeting and has agreed to hold over for three months. Today will be his last meeting and has agreed to hold over for three months. Micah Alameda will present Micah Alameda will present the certificate of appreciation to Commissioner DeLuise on behalf of Mayor Chemo Alameda. the certificate of appreciation to Commissioner DeLuise on behalf of Mayor Chemo Alameda.
Mahalo, Chair. Aloha, One Word Planning Commissioners. Mahalo, Chair. Aloha, One Word Planning Commissioners. Aloha, Chair Daniele. Aloha, Chair Daniele. My name is Micah Alameda, Executive Assistant, Office of the Mayor. My name is Micah Alameda, Executive Assistant, Office of the Mayor. On behalf of the mayor, it is our honor to be here to honor outgoing Commissioner Mr. Wayne DeLuise. On behalf of the mayor, it is our honor to be here to honor outgoing Commissioner Mr. Wayne DeLuise. Not just for, you know, his service over the last few years, Not just for, you know, his service over the last few years, but for his commitment, for his time, for his energy, for the value that he adds but for his commitment, for his time, for his energy, for the value that he adds on this commission, which is very critical to the, not just on this commission, which is very critical to the, not just today, but the future of Hawaii Island. today, but the future of Hawaii Island. It's not easy serving on these boards, commissions, and committees. It's not easy serving on these boards, commissions, and committees. As the individual who is responsible to manage this vast network of over thirty boards, commissions, and committees, As the individual who is responsible to manage this vast network of over thirty boards, commissions, and committees, I have an idea of what it takes to serve, right? I have an idea of what it takes to serve, right? Just going through the confirmation process is one thing. Just going through the confirmation process is one thing. And then being here today, like, we barely have a quorum, right? And then being here today, like, we barely have a quorum, right? So thank you to new Commissioner Frattonardo for being here this morning. Congratulations. So thank you to new Commissioner Frattonardo for being here this morning. Congratulations. But no doubt, we are very aware of the void that will be created of Mr. DeLuise's expiration, right? But no doubt, we are very aware of the void that will be created of Mr. DeLuise's expiration, right? So that falls on us, right, to help find suitable individuals like yourselves, right, to do this very important work. So that falls on us, right, to help find suitable individuals like yourselves, right, to do this very important work. The county can't do it alone. We need volunteers like yourselves. The county can't do it alone. We need volunteers like yourselves. So mahalo nui loa. So mahalo nui loa. We are super cognizant that Mr. DeLuise's service goes back. We are super cognizant that Mr. DeLuise's service goes back. It doesn't just start and end here. He was a former police commissioner. It doesn't just start and end here. He was a former police commissioner. He's the former president of the Konolehuo Industrial Area Association, right, that He's the former president of the Konolehuo Industrial Area Association, right, that gives back and provides so much for our community, our commercial interests, small businesses, organizations. gives back and provides so much for our community, our commercial interests, small businesses, organizations. So this is just one little example of who Mr. DeLuise is. So this is just one little example of who Mr. DeLuise is. And on behalf of Mayor Alameda, we really appreciate your service. And on behalf of Mayor Alameda, we really appreciate your service. We greatly appreciate you willing to hold over. We greatly appreciate you willing to hold over. We promise to find your replacement ASAP, but nonetheless, We promise to find your replacement ASAP, but nonetheless, it's hard to find individuals like you, yeah, to step up and put themselves forward. it's hard to find individuals like you, yeah, to step up and put themselves forward. So thank you so much, and we wish you the best of luck in your next chapter. So thank you so much, and we wish you the best of luck in your next chapter. Mahalo, Mr. DeLuise. Mr. Chair, if I could request a brief recess to present Mr. DeLuise with this certificate and take a quick picture. Mahalo, Mr. DeLuise. Mr. Chair, if I could request a brief recess to present Mr. DeLuise with this certificate and take a quick picture.
Certainly. We're gonna take a quick recess, then we'll be back. Certainly. We're gonna take a quick recess, then we'll be back.
Mahalo. Mahalo.
Time is now nine thirty. And we have YouTube up. Okay. Okay, moving on to approval of the November 4th, 2025 minutes, including executive session minutes, have been deferred to the next commission meeting. We will now begin public testimony, starting with in-person speakers, followed by Zoom participants. Testimony will continue until all are heard. Public comments are welcome on any agenda item now or when the item is called. Testifiers in person, please press the microphone button and speak directly and clearly into the microphone so your statement can be recorded. Zoom testifiers, please keep your video off and audio muted until called to speak. Speak, this is an in-person meeting in Zoom and YouTube are provided as a courtesy. The meeting will continue even if the connections fail. Please keep your testimony respectful and delivered with aloha to me as the chair. Personal attacks and disruptive behavior will not be permitted, and I may pause or even end the meeting at any time if necessary to maintain decorum. All public testimony is limited to three minutes. I ask each of you to please respect the time limit so we can hear from as many of you as possible. Staff, are there any individuals present to provide in-person testimony?
No, Chair, not at this time.
Okay, anybody on Zoom?
No, Chair, not at this time.
Okay, very good. Okay, here we go with the introducing agenda item number one. Applicant Maurice and Char Anna? Pronounced right? Thomas Trust, PL-SPP-2025-105, amended PL-SPP-2022-17. Application to amend special permit number PL-SPP-2022-17 to allow a three-year extension to condition four, obtaining certificate of occupancy. Special permit number PL-SPP-2022-17 was originally approved to legitimize the use of an existing warehouse and office facility for warehousing, distribution, and administrative operations related to retail and service activities in Orkin Land Estates and Volcano Village on 1.45 acres of land in the state land use agricultural district. The subject property is located at 16-1695 34th Avenue at the southeast corner of the intersection of Orkin Land Drive, Orkin Land Estates, Puna, Hawaii, TMK 31-6-9 parcel 385. Staff, we can, you can now present the presentation on this application. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning. As mentioned, this is an application to amend special permit PL-SPP-2022-000017. The subject parcel is identified by the red star in the Orkin Land subdivision of the Puna District, located at the corner of Orkin Land Drive and 34th Avenue. The applicant is requesting an amendment to allow a three-year time extension to condition number four, to secure a certificate of occupancy for an existing warehouse and office facility and related improvements for warehousing, distribution, and administrative operations related to retail and service activities in Orkin Land Estates and Volcano Village. The existing facility is located on TMK 1-6-009-385 and is currently permitted as an agricultural storage building. The current use is an existing 8,160-square-foot building, which houses 7,200 square feet of warehouse and distribution space and 960 square feet of administrative office space. There's also a refrigerated storage container for ice manufacturing and storage. There's eight employees for this facility, three administrative, four warehouse, with one delivery driver. The hours of operation is seven days a week from six to six. And they receive one forty-foot container shipment a month. And they make approximately twelve daily deliveries from this site to their other businesses. The county zoning map, you can see the subject property outlined in red and is zoned agricultural three acres, or A3A. The land use pattern allocation guide identifies the property as medium-density urban and the state land use for this area is agricultural. In this aerial photo, you can see that the site is located at the corner of Orkin Land Drive and 34th Avenue. It's all lined in red, and the blue star right next to it is one of the applicant's businesses in Orkin Land General Store, which includes a True Value Hardware, which is supported by this facility. Here's applicant's site plan that shows existing facility and parking. The subject property is accessed by a paved driveway from Orkin Land Drive. This site photo is taken from the intersection showing Orkin Land Drive and 34th Avenue with a subject parcel in the middle. Some more site photos. This is of Orkin Land Drive with eastern view on the left and western view on the right. And a photo of this 34th Avenue looking southern. And the director's recommendation is approval with conditions. And with that ends my presentation. Available to answer questions.
Thank you. Commissioners, we have any questions for staff? Okay, will the applicant and/or the representatives please come forward? Okay, I'm gonna swear you guys in. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth on this matter now before the One Word Planning Commission? I do. Thank you. Please speak directly and clearly into your microphone, state your name and the town you reside in and whom you represent. Have you received the background recommendation reports from the planning department? Have you received the background recommendation reports from the planning department?
Yes, yes, we have.
Do you agree with the recommendations, including the proposed conditions?
Yes, we do.
Okay, is there anything else you'd like to tell the commission?
Sure. Good morning, Chair Daniele. Good morning, commissioners. And Commissioner De Luz, thank you for your five years of service on this commission. Over the years, I really appreciated your thorough and balanced approach as you deliberate on matters before this commission. Hate to see you go, but you can nominate yourself back in another five years. So hopefully, hopefully we'll see you back on this commission one day. My name is Darren O'Reilly. I'm a land use planning consultant residing in Hilo. And to my right is the applicant Maurice Thomas, and he resides in?
Volcano.
Volcano. Unfortunately, his wife Jiranan Thomas could not be with, with us today. She is probably getting ready for lunch service at her restaurant, Tai Tai Bistro and Bar in Volcano, and if none of you have ever been there, I encourage you to do so. We appreciate the planning director's recommendation of approval of the time extension request. It has been a long three-year journey for the Thomases. When the special permit was approved in October of twenty twenty two in order to, in an effort to bring the existing agricultural warehouse into compliance. Since then, the applicant has been diligent in his efforts to comply with all of the conditions within the special permit. And for many years, the applicant has offered monthly reports to demonstrate that compliance and his continuing efforts. However, there has been struggles. We've been in communication throughout the past three years, where he's asked for my continuing guidance to help facilitate the process. And it has taken one year just to find an architect willing to take on the work, then another year and a half to actually prepare the plans, which was finally submitted in May of this year, and where it's currently still under review by the Department of Public Works. The photographs that you've seen, and we do appreciate the very thorough presentation by staff, shows the effort that has been made by the applicant in the, over the past three years, which includes the installation of a new septic system, paving of the entire area, the parking and the loading area, and the installation of the drainage systems. They are currently working on properly permitting the agricultural facility in order to allow for its proper conversion into a commercial facility. But that is also going to take some time. So we appreciate the planning director's recommendation for an additional three years to give Mr. Thomas an opportunity to finally conclude this matter and bring the facility in full compliance. And we note that by the commission's support of not only the original special permit in twenty twenty two and hopefully with this time extension, the applicant will continue to provide a much-needed service to the communities of Orkin Land Estates and Volcano Village. So with that, we stand ready to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Commissioners, you have any questions on this matter?
I just want to show, tell you I appreciate what you're doing in that area. I live in La Playa, so our, our choices for retail or any sort of business or food. I live thirty miles from town, and your area is quite far from here. So it does provide an awesome service for the people in that surrounding area and even beyond. And also, I noticed the letter from the Watamal family. They've been doing business in Hawaii for over a hundred and twenty years, very respected family. And I just wanted to make a note, thank you, Mr. O'Reilly, for your report. I read every page in this report. And Moses, I appreciate what you did as far as the completeness of this report. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other questions, comments?
I just had a quick question. So this was a prior, this was a prior ag building?
That is correct.
Okay, so it's really just more of a bringing it up to code for commercial standard building?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioners. Do we have anyone in-house to testify?
No, we do not, Chair.
And is there anyone on Zoom to testify?
Here, we have no Zoom testifiers.
Okay, thank you very much. I will now ask for motion for action.
I move that the application to amend special permit PL dash SPP dash twenty twenty five zero 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 one zero five slash amend PL dash SPP dash two zero two two dash zero 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 one seven to allow a three-year time extension to condition four, obtain certificate of occupancy, be approved based on the planning director's findings, recommendation, and conditions which shall be adopted.
Thank you, Commissioner. Fukushima, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Okay, so it was moved by Commissioner Fukushima and seconded by Commissioner Frattonardo. I guess staff, do we have roll call? Is there any further discussion? No? Okay, very good. We can take roll call, please.
Roll call vote. Commissioner Fukushima. And Commissioner Frattonardo.
Aye.
And Commissioner De Luz.
Aye.
And Chair Daniele.
Aye.
All right, motion passes with four aye votes and two excuse.
Okay, the planning department staff will provide a written letter based on our based on our decision. Thank you. Okay, on to applicant number two. Okay, this is CU Hawaii Federal Credit Union, PL dash REZ dash twenty twenty five ninety, amend REZ two hundred eight eighty eight. Applicant for ten-year time extension to condition C, complete project, and amendment to condition D, dedication of road widening to remove roadway improvements and deletion of condition E, roadway improvements to remove required requirement of curb gutter and sidewalk improvements of change of zone ordinance number zero nine dash forty four, which rezoned a twenty-two thousand five hundred square foot parcel of land from a single-family residence RS dash ten to neighborhood commercial, ten thousand square feet, or CN dash ten. The subject property is located at three, five three three Manono Street, approximately three hundred feet north of intersection with Hualani Street, Waikia House Lots, Waikia South Hilo, Hawaii, TMK three two dash two dash thirty-four parcel thirty-six. Planning department staff, please give your presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. As you stated, this is an amendment to change of zone two thousand eight zero 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 eighty-eight. And the subject property is shown on this map, located in the South Hilo District, and it's located on Manono Street, shown here with the red star. The applicant is requesting amendments to change of zone ordinance number nine forty-four, including a ten-year time extension to condition C, to amend condition D, which is the dedication of road widening to remove roadway improvements, to delete condition E, roadway improvements, to remove the requirement of applicant to construct pavement widening and curb gutter sidewalk improvements. And as an alternative to removing the requirement of roadway improvements, the applicant proposes to provide a pro-rata pavement to the county for their share of improvements, since the county has a project to widen the Manono Street. The applicant proposes to construct a new member-facing credit union branch facility on Manono Street. And the applicant's existing credit union facility on Hinano will be maintained and utilized for administrative and back office operations. The subject property is shown here on Manono Street, and the zoning is CN ten, the existing zoning. Surrounding zoning is residential and commercial, as you can see. The state land use boundary is urban, as is the entire area surrounding it. And the general plan designates this area as a medium-density urban. The site plan here, you can see, shows the entire project. And just for orientation, the existing credit union facility is to the north of the subject property. And the subject property itself is down here on the bottom left of the slide, and it shows the, the new, the proposed credit union facility. And that's on Manono Street, and then to the right of the slide is Hinano. And the, the property that will be addressed in the next item is just to the right with the parking lot. The subject property again on Manono Street is outlined in red. And this aerial photograph is a little bit out of date as it shows the property has a dwelling which has since been demolished. And you can see for orientation, the existing credit, credit union branch facility is here on the kind of, to the upper right from the subject property. And the subject property again here, shown in red. And this shows you a recent photograph of the subject property and Manono Street looking north, view of Manono Street looking south on the bottom of the side. And you can see the recent condition of the subject property here on the bottom slide, where the dwelling has been demolished, and the current condition of Manono Street looking south and looking north. And with that, the planning director's recommendation is to provide a favorable recommendation with conditions to the county council for this amendment, which is PL REZ twenty twenty five ninety. That concludes my presentation, and I can take any questions.
Great, thank you. Commissioners, you have any questions for staff? Okay, thank you for your presentation. Will the applicant and/or their representatives please come forward? Okay, I'll swear, I'll swear you guys in again. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth on this matter now before the Women Planning Commission?
Yes, I do.
I do.
Please speak directly and clearly into your microphone. State your name and the town which you, and whom you represent.
Good morning, once again, Chair Daniele. My name is Darren O'Reilly, land use planning consultant assisting the applicant's CU Hawaii Federal Credit Union. To my right is Mr. James Takamine, CEO, CEO of the credit union. And if you allow us, we would like to make a brief presentation, unless you have, first you have some questions of us.
No, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Good morning, Chair Daniele and Commissioners. Thank you for having us this morning. As Darren mentioned, my name is James Takamine. I'm the president and CEO of CU Hawaii Federal Credit Union. And I just wanted to share a little bit of history about our organization and how we came to be. So our credit union was founded in nineteen fifty-five as the Big Island Businessmen's Federal Credit Union. So we were founded by ten local Hilo businessmen and chartered at that time. Since then, we've merged with a few other credit unions that have grown to seven branches, as well as three student branches at Waikia, Pahoa, and Kiala High Schools. And we serve over thirty thousand members of our island. To be a member of our credit union, you need to live, work, worship, or attend school on Hawaii island. So that is our charter, and that is the community that we serve. I'd like to also share a little bit of, about what a credit union is. So we are a financial not-for-profit cooperative. So we are owned by our members. We are a not-for, not-for-profit. So that is important to our mission of serving the credit union and providing financial education, financial literacy training, and community service in all forms. You know, we provide basic financial services to our members, checking accounts, credit cards, mortgage loans, home purchases, all of those things. We support small businesses, and it is a big part of our mission to, to provide community development efforts and support other nonprofits within our community. In terms of our application here today, we are looking to build a new facility facing Manono Street. Our current facility has been in place for many years and is in need of renovation. We did acquire the property on Manono Street. We feel like it's a better access point for members to be able to access our location from Manono Street. It would be very difficult for us to renovate our current branch and continue to serve the community and have operations at that point. The Hinano Street branch is our main facility. That's where all of our back office operations and administrative staff work. And so we'll be converting that to more administrative space. And, and when the new branch would be completed, we would obviously move the member operations to the new facility. It is also our intention to build community space that can be utilized by community groups, other organizations, and to provide education and, and training and financial literacy for our membership through that new space. So overall, you know, we would just would like to inform the commission that we're here to serve the community, and we're happy to continue on. And in our seventieth year next year, continue to grow to serve our members better. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioners, anything, any questions?
Thank you, Chair. So we have a letter from Public Works. Are you guys aware of this letter?
Yes, we are.
Are you in agreement to their recommendation? Or what's your opinion of it?
Oh, I'm sorry, and I should note for the record that we did, regarding this particular docket, twenty twenty five ninety, we did review the planning director's background report and recommendation, and we are in agreement with that recommendation. Part of that recommendation basically allows, is in support of the applicant's request to provide its pro-rata share of improvements along Manono Street. And we have been made, we know that the Department of Public Works memo recommends denial of the applicant's request for the pro-rata share of roadway improvements. But the director has considered the Public Works comments and have therefore recommended that pro-rata share is the best path. Therefore, uh, recommended that pro rata share, uh, is the best path forward. Uh, and this is in particular because, um, there, uh, we understand that the Department of Public Works as part of its CIP program. Is looking to improve, uh, Manono Street with curb gutter and sidewalks, uh, somewhere around twenty twenty-nine. So, you know, our four years from now and they're basically replicating what was done to Manono Street to the south. Uh, where it was done comprehensively and cohesively and, uh, we feel that that is a better approach to. To improving the street frontage and road shoulders of Manono Street. So we do support the director's recommendation even in light of the, uh, Department of Public Works comments.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions, comments? Yes.
When was the last time that any business along that stretch of county roadway? Did any improvements along any sidewalks or curbs?
Personally, along Manono Street in particular, I am not aware of any specific individual business improving. That street checks, uh, street section and maybe, um. The depart, if the planning department is aware, they can provide that information.
So you would, they would make you to be the first entity to make any improvements? That's my question. You would be the first of any of the businesses that made improvements if 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 improvements were to be made by you. You would be the first to do any improvements?
To the best of my knowledge, I think you're correct. I I'm just trying to envision that section of Manono Street and I'm simply not aware of any existing. Curb gutter sidewalk improvements that was done specifically by a landowner.
Great, thanks. Um, I have a. Director, uh. Daro, Daro, uh, do you have any, uh, knowledge of that?
Aloha Chair Daniele and members of the planning commission. Uh, Jeff Daro with the planning department. So, uh, there have been a number. That's our typical condition in a rezoning along a roadway. This actual can, uh, rezoning that is being amended had that same condition. That they were to do curb gutter sidewalk, uh, subdivide out five feet and dedicated to the county. Uh, we have Manono Marketplace that came in recently. We've had a number of rezonings along Manono that have been required to put in these improvements. Unfortunately, um. You know, I I'm not sure if you are looking at the most current memo from Department of Public Works. They have one dated December first. So that at the end, if you look at the last, uh, sentence. They seem to open the door for the ability to allow the pro rata fair share. Um, so that kind of gave us that opportunity to look at this from that standpoint. Especially in light of the fact that they're going to come through and redo this whole area. It makes no sense to, um, put in these improvements and then find out later they don't match and have to. Uh, tear them out or adjust or whatever. So we're in full support of of this particular request. But just for reference, our typical, uh, condition is the condition that is forwarded to us. When we request comments from DPW, which typically asks, uh, along main roads like this for curb gutters. Sidewalk improvements. Every so often, we may divert from that if it doesn't seem reasonable. I don't know if you, uh, remember, I believe it was last meeting, we had the Hawaii, uh, I Center. That we did require on Kapialani, but on, uh, was it Kapialani? Uh, yeah, Kapial, but on the, uh, side street, that that would have really changed the character of the area because. The entire area was grass shoulders and so we were okay with, uh, leaving that. Even though they had requested, uh, the applicants put that in. It just didn't seem like it was going to be, uh, uh, in character with that area. But for this particular application, we're in support of the applicant's, uh, request to, uh, allow pro rata fair share. Just for some history, um, this is, this particular, um. Uh, we're type of request came out, uh, in about two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen. Uh, there were a number of rezonings right along Kilowea Street, um, right behind KTA. And. The planning commission chair at that time or one of the planning commission members said, you know, this piecemeal kind of. Um, approach to doing improvements just doesn't seem to work because. In certain areas you'll have a five-foot delineation. They subdivide that out. They do the improvements. So you have it come and kind of do a, uh. You know, a divert from the, uh, area. We've seen where they asked for ten feet. And they delineated out and they do the improvements and it it's ten feet in. And so you'll see this in particular areas when you are traveling through industrial or commercial zones in Hilo. And that's the reason why is because it was a requirement. But if there is definite plans to do road improvements through the public works projects. We would rather work with them to do this type of approach. And in this, uh, area of Manono Street, they're looking at doing it. As Darren mentioned, they did the south and it it was beautiful. It was really well done. Looking forward to them, uh, continuing on down Manono Street and be able to, um, improve that whole section. And so as far as how it works, we're not really sure. Uh, DPW will have to work out the. Uh, the the amount of money that they'll ask for each of those commercial rezonings, uh, along the area. But I hope that helps.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think, um.
Sorry.
Yeah, I just think, um, just quick comment here. Uh, I'm actually pretty surprised that Department of Public Works, uh, would even. You know, would would send this letter with 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 a denial. Um, you know, we've seen a lot of these things, uh, you know, come up, uh, in these meetings with the curbs and improvements and. It just doesn't make sense doing piecemeal. I mean, I I would think that these guys in public works would would, you know, be a little bit more Akamai about. Uh, what they're doing because I never thought that that ever made any sense at all. So, um. And they did do a great job of of what they have done. Um, and it was all done all at once, everything, and that's the way it should be. So that's just my my, uh, comment on that. Yes, Commissioner Fukushima.
You know, I would agree wholeheartedly with everything that you're saying from a standpoint of community development and how things. But I want to say that CU Hawaii has been a main staple of this community, the backbone of our community. I mean, we're talking about nineteen fifty, I mean, it predates many of us, you know, and I think that, uh. With one of the things that I read, it talked about the fifty percent, um, decrease in people going to the bank physically. And I understand that because as we improve with time, people do online banking or they have the ability to do different things. So the impact to the traffic to me and the safety, that's what I'm kind of more focused on. It's the safety and in that area you already have, you know, that Manono Mall you have, you know, and I can understand why perhaps they would have. A little different requirement because tour buses coming in and larger quantity, larger scale. Solid commercial business as opposed to a bank that is, you know, a community, um. Resource for for our people. And so I I agree. I think that it's. And and I saw the words in here unfair, maybe an unfair. I think at some point the voice of reason has to be what makes sense? What makes sense? We waste a lot of money, a lot of time doing things that we have to end up redoing like the Suisan Bridge. It makes no sense to use our tax dollars, uh, for wasteful projects when they're going to have to be redone again anyway. So, yeah, I'm I'm with you. Thank you for the hard work.
Yes, you have a question?
Oh, yeah. Thanks Chair. So, um. Director Daro, the, um, consensus is to, um. It seems like DPW is saying, hey, we got this. We got a planted mine. Just agree to a fair pro rata share. So is that kind of the standard you're seeing more with DPW if they're actively going to do something in the area? I'm just curious because one is ordinance that we're. Basically, they're okay with, um, dropping the ordinance. And then just applying the fair pro rata share of of when they get to it, kind of deal. Is that correct?
Well, it's a tricky memo because if.
Well, that's why I'm trying to read through it.
I know. And I think what they were doing was opening the door to allow me to make, uh, a decision with an option. Or allow us to make that decision. Um. Typically ninety-nine percent of the rezonings we see have a typical standard curb gutter sidewalk improvement condition. Um, we're aware of, you know, through this memo of the improvement schedule coming in from Manono. Typically, we don't get that type of, uh, foresight. Um, it's just a requirement based on the increased density for that particular property. It, you know, it, projects like that are, um, far and few between where they come in and they do. Um, large-scale improvements to a particular area. Uh, and so they depend on as the density increases that each one of those provide their. Uh, type of fair share as they do that. I I agree. I wish it was more, um, long-term focus as far as like. Uh, having this type of pro rata share and then when they, um, have the ability to come in. With not only taking into consideration their budget, but also. The consideration of all these people that will, uh, have input into the project. They can therefore plan for those larger scale projects. But yeah, unfortunately, right now it's it's, uh, piece by piece.
No, thank you. So, um. With that in mind, I guess since it sounds like it's favorable to move forward. Uh, I guess for the future, then, uh, that would kind of set the template for other developments along the same corridor to follow the same. Uh, example, well, I guess, um, requirement, I guess. So that kind of clears this memo, um, on what they're saying. So now I can ask the applicant if they're in agreement. So.
Yeah.
Based based on your clarification. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I, if I could real quick, I wanted to address Commissioner Fukushima's reference to unfair. That obviously was not the correct, uh, term. Uh, the term should have been more consistency.
Right.
Not a term of fairness or unfairness, but I just wanted to correct that on the record. Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioners, any other questions, comments? Okay, um, do we have anybody in person, uh, who wants to testify on this subject?
No Chair.
Okay, do we have anyone on Zoom?
Chair, we have no Zoom testifiers at this time.
Okay, thank you. Um. Do we have a motion for action?
A quick, quick question. Um, sorry Chair.
Go ahead.
Because we kind of took a break to to ask the director to to kind of explain to us. Uh, because it was unclear for me. I just wanted to ask the applicant that. And I think it's in the background, but the you are in agreement because it's going to be part of a condition for the approval. Uh, on the fair share basis.
Uh, we we agree. I'm trying to look at, um. We agree with the director's recommenda, recommended, uh, condition regarding pro rata share and that's, uh, condition G. As presented within the, uh. The draft conditions of approval. So that condition D in summary would, uh, require a five-foot future road widening strip to be, uh, subdivided and dedicated to the county at no cost. When required by the Department of Public Works and at that. And then to pay their pro rata share to the county for, um. For impro, uh, improvements of, uh, Manono Street with curb gutter and sidewalks.
Okay. No, thanks. Thank you, Mr. Ryan. Even, you know, part of it is, I know it's the next agenda item, but it's very similar. Um, and so I'm I'm just, I'm strictly going by the TMK. So, um, so with that. Statement by, uh, Mr. Ryan, I'm I'm prepared to move forward.
Okay, uh, do I have a motion for action?
I moved a favorable recommendation on PL this REZ dash two zero two five. Zero 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 nine zero. Uh, backslash amended REZ two zero zero eight dash zero 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 be forwarded to the county council. On the applicant's proposed, uh, ten-year extension to, uh, condition C. Complete project and amendment to condition D dedication of. Road widening and deletion of condition E. Roadway improvements of change of zone ordinance. Number zero nine four four. Uh, based on the planning director's recommendation amended conditions of approval which shall be adopted.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, very good. The motion, uh, was moved by Commissioner Duluz and seconded by Commissioner, uh, Fratnado. Any discussion? Any more discussion on this matter? Okay, if none, staff, a roll call please.
Yes, Chair, and I just want to take a moment to, um, note that we need to, um, prior to this moving up to county council. We need to, uh, revise and correct the ramsearing condition numbers. Because, um. My apologies, there's a couple that need to be changed. The number, the numbering, not the content clearly. But that shouldn't amend your motion, I I believe.
So the correction, uh, asking for correction, so, um. Number one is a ten-year extension. That that's fine. Condition C complete project, that's fine, right? Um, and amendment to condition D dedication of road widening, that that's fine. Um, so the change is, um. Was it a deletion of C but adding G? As was explained? Or should we go back and reference the? Recommendation? Was that the change? I guess that's what I'm asking.
The change that I'm referring to?
Yeah.
It's simply the numbering because, um.
Well, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's just the ramsearing of the numbering. It's it's not the requested. It's not the applicant's request nor is it the director's recommendation that's changed.
Which which which, excuse me Chair, which lettering needs to be corrected? In the amendment?
So on condition, if you look at the recommendation. Condition F. Should actually note that that was deleted condition E. And that was the the, uh, request from the applicant was to delete condition E. But my apologies, that should have shown that it was previous, the original condition E.
So it's the old lettering that's incorrect.
So it's the old lettering that's incorrect?
Okay, yes, it's simply the, uh, ramsearing of the old, original lettering.
Excuse me, so then the lettering that is in the current, um, with, you know, the strikeout and corrected, is that, that right? Oh, I'm sorry. Is the lettering, um, that's in the, in the amended, showing the strikeouts, is that correct? Or does it need to be changed further?
In the
In the, in the recommendation?
So it, it's the ramsearing of the original strikeouts.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
I think so, yes. So this is correct as it's presented with the ramsearing?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, great. Um, do we have to, uh, redo our motion to include that, or not? Okay, 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 so you're just making a note of that?
The, the condition, the director's recommendation is the same.
Yeah.
It's just a little bit of housekeeping for the ramsearing.
Okay, so, um, with that done, I think we're ready for roll call.
So this is a motion to approve, um, as recommended by the planning director. Commissioner Duluz?
Aye.
Commissioner Fratnardo?
Aye.
Commissioner Fukushima? And Chair Daniele?
Aye.
The motion passes with four votes and two excused and absent.
Very good, thank you.
Commissioner, may I take a bathroom break?
Yeah, let's take a short, uh, let's take a ten-minute break. We'll be back here at ten thirty. Thank you. Okay, uh, we're back. Uh, the time is now ten thirty, and we will move to, um, agenda item number three. Okay, applicant CU Hawaii Federal Credit Union, PL dash REZ dash twenty twenty-five zero 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 nine one. Application for a change of zone from single-family resident, uh, ten thousand square feet RS dash ten zoning uh, district to a neighborhood commercial, ten thousand square feet CN dash ten zoning district for a twenty-two thousand five hundred square foot parcel. The subject property is located at four nine four Hinano Street, approximately three hundred feet north of the intersection with Hulani Street, uh, Waikia House Lots, Waikia South Hilo, Hawaii, TMK three two dash two dash zero three four, parcel forty-five. Uh, staff, could you please give, uh, your presentation? And thank you.
Just one moment, Chair. Thank you. This is a change of zone application for CU Hawaii Federal Credit Union. And similar to the previous item, the subject property is located in the South Hilo District, and this is located on Hinano Street. It's shown here on this map with the red star. The applicant is requesting a change of zone from single-family residential ten thousand square feet to neighborhood commercial ten thousand square feet zoning district for twenty-two thousand five hundred square feet of land. The objective is, um, the applicant will construct a forty-one stall parking lot on park- on this parcel, parcel forty-five, that fronts Hinano Street for a member and employee parking to service a new member-facing credit union branch facility on the adjacent parcel on parcel thirty-six fronting Manono. The applicant's existing credit union facility on the adjacent property to the north will be maintained and utilized for administrative and back office operations. And the subject property is, uh, shown with the red outline. It is located on, or it fronts Hinano Street, and it's, um, for reference, adjacent to the applicant's other property on Manono Street. And the subject property is currently zoned RS ten. And again, um, this area is predominantly residential and commercial zoning. The state land use is urban, as is the entire area, and the general plan is medium-density urban. This would be the same, um, site plan that you saw on the previous item, but I'll note that the subject property is the one with the parking lot area to the bottom right of the slide, and it's directly south of the applicant's current credit union facility. Again, the property outlined in red. And these photos show you Hinano Street. Um, these photos were taken recently, showing Hinano looking north and looking south on the bottom of the slide there. And you can see the, um, the property has been cleared and is currently being used as an informal parking area. And that brings me to the planning director's recommendation, which is to provide a favorable recommendation with conditions to the County Council for PL REZ twenty twenty-five zero 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 ninety-one. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Commissioners, we have any questions? Okay, seeing none at this moment in time, uh, will the applicant and/or the representatives please come forward? Okay, yeah, I've already sworn you guys in, so no need for that. Um, have you received the background recommendation report from the Planning Department?
Yes, we have.
Do you agree with the recommendations, including the proposed conditions?
Uh, we support the favorable recommendation, as well as most of the, uh, request of proposed conditions with the exception of condition G, uh, where we have requested that condition G that requires uh, the improvement of the curb gutter sidewalks fronting the Hinano Street property be converted to a pro rata option. And we've offered, we've offered suggested, uh, language in our recent communications, and we do apologize for the, the, the discussions that were delivered late to you. So we, we appreciate the Commissioners taking the time to read it this morning, and hopefully we've conveyed the applicant's, um, thoughts and concerns. But we do, uh, stand ready to answer any questions that you may have regarding these communications.
Okay, um, Commissioners, any questions?
Yes, Commissioner Duluz? Your discussion on the, um, curb gutter and sidewalk issue. Looks like it's consistent with what we just did with the Manono Street. This is Hinano Street, but adjoining property, so. Um, I think it's consistent with the director had mentioned that, um, I, I guess there would probably be a question to, um, clar- just for clarification, that they would probably do something similar with Hinano Street, is that DPW, um, sorry, um, if I can talk to the, ask the director a question?
Aloha Chair, members of the, when we're planning Commission Jeff Darrell with, uh, Planning Department. So this one's a little different. Um, the other one, there was a little bit of leeway. Definite, uh, proposed future improvements along Manono. Uh, we don't, we definitely don't have that type of, um, long-range, um, plans for Hinano. Uh, there was, um, other projects on Hinano. One is, um, Manono Marketplace. Uh, they were required to put in the curb gutter sidewalk, as well as Big Island Candies. Um, and again, as consistency. This one, the Department of Public Works memo dated November seventeenth which I believe is your exhibit seven in the background report, was, uh, very clear as, as in regards to their recommendation. So we typically will follow their recommendation. And again, every so often, we may not, um, for a particular reason that's justifiable. In this particular case, I don't see any future plans for the Department of Public Works coming through and, and doing the same type of improvements, uh, along Manono, on, along Hinano. Hinano is not an arterial, um, it's not, uh, probably a priority road in relationship to Manono Street and others similar like Keikua Na'oa. So in this particular case, the planning department is recommending that this condition remain in. That does not negate the fact that you folks can discuss it and decide if you are, would recommend a different option to the council.
Thank you. Any, any more questions for the director?
So I have a question. So, um, your current location, you know, across from Don's Grill, right? Trying to picture it. Were there, I know it's been there a long time, but what, what is that layout? Are there sidewalks? I, I don't think there are. Is that correct? There's nothing there?
No.
I mean, it's the best one because a lot of the overflow from Don's Grill parks on that wall. I'm trying to remember it.
We allow them to park in the, uh, credit union paved parking area on our main building when we're not open. And then they also use, um, the vacant lot that we're discussing now.
Right. So actually, there really isn't anything there now. So we're saying, if you go to, to the street that the opposite side, we're now going to require it because the other one was grandfathered in. Is that what we're saying? Like you don't have to require that? Because Don's Grill, I know doesn't have, I know they have nothing there but bushes.
Correct. There are certain, um, businesses that, um, did not come in for a rezoning. Don's Grill, I believe, is, uh, there's all of the properties north of, um, this particular rezone are, were originally zoned general commercial. So they, they had existing zoning.
Right. Does that include Big Island Candies?
No, though that is south.
Right. So Big Island Candies, I, again, I can see the, the heavy foot traffic, the heavy.
Right.
You know, they're, they serve such a different purpose. They're just not even closed at the, at the bank or the credit union again. People are going there to conduct particular kind of business. It's not like they're going there, you know, fifty people at a time, you know? And so I, is, you know, the way I'm thinking about it is, are we requiring this now because we want to set precedent for the future for anything else that comes in? You know, I'd like a little more clarity.
Sure. It's, it's not a precedent. It's, it's standard. This is our, uh, Department of Public Works, uh, standard comment letter. It's our standard condition for rezonings, uh, to a higher density, whether it's uh, for residential type uses or commercial or industrial type uses. And again, um, it's a tough one because we want to support the applicant moving forward. We understand, uh, the actual area. And again, that's where I had mentioned previously that, um, I, we had a similar situation where we provided relief on a less traveled road versus a more traveled road. In this case, Hinano Street is transitioning. Their current, uh, property is in commercial, uh, general commercial. The new property is going to be in commercial neighborhood. And we will stand with our recommendation. Again, you folks have, um, the ability to, uh, provide a, a different recommendation to the council.
To your knowledge, is there anything else upcoming on that road that you can speculate or give us? Like, is there any other business currently looking at? I mean.
Not that I'm aware of. Let me. Nope. Not that we're aware of. Nothing jumped out at me. Typically, the, uh, the, uh, interior streets, uh, along this particular area, uh, we, um, in the past have been, they've been more focused on residential type uses, not commercial. The commercial is more focused on the main, uh, roadways in this area. So this is one of the very few rezonings that we've seen in, along, um, Manono, I mean, along Hinano, other than, uh, the marketplace and Big Island Candies.
I think I'm looking at like what's reasonable as well, regardless of a standard.
Sure.
You know, it's, it's what is reasonable at this point in time. And I know there's no, there's nothing on the horizon for the future like, say, Manono.
Yeah.
So I think this is an interesting decision we have to make, you know?
Any other, um, any other?
No, I.
Questions, discussion?
Thank you.
Yeah, okay. Questions? I don't have any.
I missed it, Chair.
So, and I have one more comment. So you are not saying that you're not willing to do, you know, pro-rata to, to, to do this improvement. You're saying that should the county, at some future time, decide that they need to improve this because other businesses perhaps might be coming along, that you're not going to obscure your responsibility or your duties to be, to pay for this. You're just saying at this point in time, as is, maybe it doesn't make a whole lot of sense. And also, given the foot traffic and the, the nature of your business, may not necessitate the change or the improvements at this time. Is that right?
You're absolutely correct, Commissioner Fukushima. If I can kind of offer another perspective, um, this particular branch, which is the main branch of, uh, CU Hawaii Federal Credit Union, has been here for forty-five years. They've ser, they've served that entire, uh, Hilo community since that time. It's a captive, in many ways, it's a captive, uh, community, meaning Hilo residents will go to the Hilo branch. If you want to expand your membership, which is one of the concerns by Public Works, it's usually because other areas on the island are expanding. Like if you're gonna, if Pohoa is increasing in population and members, you build a branch in Pohoa. You don't necessarily, necessarily have them come to the main Hilo branch. But that being said, um, right now, as the main branch for CU Hawaii, all the Hilo members go to that one branch, meaning they have to get onto Hinano. That's the only way you can get to this particular branch. What the applicant's vision, uh, is, is to build the member-facing branch on Manono, which has much greater capacity to handle the traffic. In essence, that will, we feel, as the traffic analysis, uh, found, that actual volume of traffic will likely decrease on Hinano. So when you really think about the effects of this particular proposed project and upon traffic along Hinano, they're actually making it better. So when you also think about that, the urgency of having to improve the Hinano Street frontage actually is lesser in, in, in our simple way of thinking. So you're absolutely correct, Commissioner, that we're not, they're not trying to abscond from any obligations to improve their frontage to commercial standards. But is it, is the urgency there to do it right away? In a piecemeal segmented manner that, again, in our mind, doesn't provide a reasonable functionality because other sidewalks don't exist in that particular area. So it's just better to coordinate the improvements at the same time. And when you really think about it, it's sort of like, if you build one thing, there's always consequences to what you build. Simply putting in sidewalks may seem like a simple thing to do, but along with sidewalks, it may result in the relocation of utility poles. The applicant took a quick look at it. Just the cost of moving two poles near their property is about a hundred thirty thousand dollars just to move them. Not only that, but when you put a curb gutter sidewalk, the gutter actually channels drainage, which means you're gonna have to now build drainage facilities to handle that additional water and runoff on the roadway system. And if the county does eventually improve that section of Manono with curb gutter sidewalks, if things don't perfectly line up, there's always the potential that whatever was built has to be removed and reconstructed all over again, which is why it all comes down to, you know, what makes sense for the particular area and for the scope of the uses that is being presented by the applicant. So we leave that with you.
Yeah, I, I guess, you know, one of the points to consider is that there is a standard in place and how we think about the, the very standards we, we have in place. And the reason we have a commission is to take a harder look at some of the things that perhaps even standards, maybe they need a little bit of deviation at times, uh, where it makes sense, where it's reasonable judgment, where we use, uh, the best of our tax dollars, our resources, your resources. I mean, it's a, it has to be a holistic approach beyond just a standard because I think rules sometimes don't, don't always cover all situations. It's kind of a, sometimes case by case, but at the same time, I can see where, reading through this quickly, this could be an arguable point for another business that comes in that says, hey, you know, why should we do it? They didn't have to do it, you know? And that's where that, somebody wrote unfair, obviously, wrong language, consistency. So it's a matter of, do we do this and say we're doing it for consistency sake because there is a standard? Or do we say, we're not going to, we're going to deviate a little bit here in the name of common sense? And, uh, what makes a reasonable, uh, choice?
Right. So, um, I, you know, once we get a motion on the floor, then we can have that discussion.
So Chair, the, um, from what I'm hearing, um, I, I'll move that a favorable recommendation on PL-REZ-2025-000091 being forwarded to the county council on the applicant's proposed change of zone from single-family residential, uh, ten thousand square feet RS-ten zoning district to a neighborhood commercial, ten thousand square foot CN-ten zoning district for a twenty-two-thousand-five-hundred-square-foot parcel. Based on the planning director's recommendation, uh, modifying the, um, not modifying, but adding to the motion would be supplementing, um, would be, yeah, under condition, moving forward with a recommendation the applicant has given us, um, on condition G. Do, do we need to read that out into the motion? Phil, let her make the motion then. All right, I'll read it. So the recommendation, uh, re, on item G, under the planning director's recommendation, I'm sorry, recommendation condition Z, uh, to be replaced with a five-foot-wide future road widening strip along the property's Hinano Street frontage shall be subdivided and dedicated at no cost to the county when required by the Department of Public Works. DPW, the applicant shall provide their pro-rata share for the construction of full improvements to the entire property frontage along Hinano Street consisting of, but not limited to pavement widening with concrete curb gutter and sidewalk, drainage improvements and any required utility relocation meeting with the approval of DPW. The pro-rata share for roadway improvement specified in this condition shall be determined by DPW and shall become due and payable to the County of Hawaii within six months from the date that formal notice is served upon the applicant by DPW regarding a program for the installation of curb gutter and sidewalk improvements along Hinano Street. Hurry.
Thank, thank you, Commissioner. Okay, let me have a second. Okay, so the, the motion was moved by Commissioner, uh, Deluse and seconded by Commissioner Fukushima. Discussion. I guess I'll start by saying again, um, yeah, I don't know why they put this, put this in as like a boilerplate for everything. It seems to me that, um, again, Department of Public Works, uh, kind of needs to go out and I think need to take a look at this stuff. Um, I don't, why would you put that in now? Why? That, that makes zero sense to me. And also, I want to bring up another point, you know, it's like, having this requirement is like gentrification. You know, part of Hilo's charm is not having sidewalks and gutters and sewer and all that stuff. I mean, that's part of the charm of, of Hilo. And when you start doing that, it just looks like every other place, you know? I mean, um, we had that big fire, right? I mean, what are they gonna do? Put a Burger King in there, right? I mean, I, you know, I mean, and that's, that's the problem. It loses its, um, charm. And everything starts looking the same. So, you know, I think aesthetics has to come into this at a certain point. And I think parts of the town should just be left the way that they are. That's why people come here, you know? I mean, if you want sidewalks and concrete and asphalt, go to Kona. You know, because that's where it is. But, you know, over here, it's, it's different. So that's my two cents. Anyone else? Discuss? Comments before roll call?
Roll call.
Okay, let's do roll call, please.
Just to confirm, this is a motion, um, to approve with the, using applicant's, the recommended condition for condition G as read out by Commissioner Deluse. Thank you. Commissioner Deluse?
Yes.
Commissioner Fukushima? Commissioner Fretinardo?
Yes.
And Chair Daniele?
Hi.
And the motion passes with four ayes and two excused and absent.
Great, thank you. And, uh, you'll be informed in writing of the commission's decision, okay?
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, it looks like, um, agenda items four and five are being, um, deferred to the January meeting? February meeting, excuse me. So I guess that's that. Okay, now, I'm. Okay, there was no SMA application received nor were there any SMA determinations or a minor report issued for November twenty-twenty-five. So, um, moving on to the next item, what we have before us is the election of offices for two thousand twenty-six. I am wondering if we shouldn't defer that until we have a full commission because we have two absent commissioners, so I don't know how we can have an election without everyone present. I, I still think we need everyone present personally. So can we defer that to the next meeting? January?
Yeah, we can put that on the January agenda.
Okay.
Will you chair the January meeting until an officer is selected?
Sure.
Okay. Would you like me to place it on the?
No, it's gonna happen, so.
Would you like me to place it on the agenda in the beginning?
Yeah.
Or at the end?
You know, let's do it in the beginning.
Okay.
Yeah. Awesome. Yeah, 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 he's here for eleven weeks. Yes. Three months. Technically. Okay, so we're gonna defer elections to January's meeting. Commissioners, do you have any matters that you would like to agendaize for the future meeting? Okay, if none, the Windward Planning Commission's next regular meeting is tentatively scheduled for Thursday, January eighth, two thousand twenty-six, here in the county council chambers in Hilo. And the public can also testify via Zoom. The date and venue of the meeting are subject to change. And that concludes today's Windward Planning Commission meeting. Thank you. I need a motion to adjourn? Okay, so everyone say aye. Aye, there you go. Thank you.
The closed captions transcript will be terminated shortly, and those who wish to save the transcript should do so now.